Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of November 16, 2017. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we commence with the meeting, I would like to thank, on behalf of all the board members, Dr. Wills, for our beautiful, can the camera pick up, our beautiful green water bottles, which really, green as in environmental, they are blue, you know, Joseph.
This is actually a fundraiser from our PTA, so it's very apropos, and it's also the time of year when we state our appreciation for our Board of Education, who worked so hard for the district and to make sure all of our students are safe and learn well and that we are responsive to our community, to our wonderful Putnam Valley community, so, thank you.
And it's a way to role model the sustained PV that we're looking for.
Fran, you need to put the microphone there, that's why we're getting the feedback. Can you get closer to here?
Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
I'd like now resolve to approve the minutes of the October 26, 2017 Business Meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to announce that the Treasurer's Report for September 2017 is available in the business office. And now the fun part, Pride in Putnam Valley.
This evening is going to begin with a house watch.
Need to turn it on.
We're going to begin with a special award for our art teacher at our elementary school. And I'm going to ask Margaret Podesta, the principal, to come up and help me with this special award. Last summer, we lost one of our elementary students in a terrible accident, and there was an attempt by everyone, a desire by everyone, to do something special in her honor. And I will have Margaret talk about this particular project before reading the certificate.
So, in a very special place outside our school, there's an outdoor classroom that you'll hear about in a few minutes. This rock pathway was created by our entire building with the leadership and the very hard work of our art teacher, Mrs. Marylana McCormick. With this pathway, you will see individualized projects by each and every student and each and every staff member that goes along with our Character Ed theme this year, "There's Only One You, and Together We Make a Difference." So, along with a book that we're reading and units of study with character education, we now have a school-wide project where the entire school community contributed their own individual artistic talents and expression. The first rock, though, was picked out by our very talented art teacher, and if you can see it in person, it's breathtaking to see. It's dedicated to our student who we loved and lost and we had a memorial for, but now this rock, which was seen by her family on the day of our memorial, just captures your heart. I knew it was going to be there, but when I saw it with my own eyes, it was hard to even just stand there and capture the beauty, but the true love behind it, dedicated to Fatima, and which leads the way into the rock pathway created by the entire school. This pathway feeds into our outdoor classroom, but the pathway is bright, it's colorful, it's full of joy and hope and shining sparkle, just like this student was, and each rock was laid down by Mrs. McCormick, who's getting this PV Pride Award. We are so proud to have Mrs. McCormick. This is literally backbreaking work, laying down the rocks, planning out how much each grade level will take in space along the pathway, planning ahead for future years to come. So, this was a lot of effort, a lot of talent, and it's ended in a beautiful project with so much meaning and love behind it.
With that, Marylana, would you come up to receive the Pride in Putnam Valley Award? So, Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents Pride in Putnam Valley to Marylana McCormick for your efforts in creating a rock pathway dedicated to a student at the elementary school.
Thank you. Do you like to say thank you? Do you like to say thank you? Oh, I'm not good at this. Thank you very much. It was a lot of work, but it was well worth it, and if you haven't seen it, it's really worth going over there and taking a look, and hopefully it will last for years, and when the fourth graders leave, they'll take their rock and the incoming kindergarteners will put theirs in their place, so it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be, you know, something that'll be around for a long time.
That is a wonderful, wonderful vision.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that. That is special.
Thank you very much.
The next Pride in Putnam Valley goes to a group of people who have had a way of making something happen that had been thought about for a long time but had never come to fruition, and that was an outdoor classroom at the Putnam Valley Elementary School. Our teachers got together and thought about how this could work. We had a teacher from the high school, Mr. Ludoviki, and another teacher, the music teacher, Mr. Odell, who had a vision for the benches and how that would be laid out, and then we had Mrs. Odell and her dad, who is here tonight, Mr. Costello, who created an all-weather blackboard so that the presentations in the classroom could continue outdoors, and, you know, the blackboard has a cover to it so that it opens like a closet, and you open it, it's the magic closet, and in it is this wonderful board to use for presentations in the outdoor classroom. And so, tonight, we have with us Marty Costello. Would you come up, Mr. Costello? This is definitely a family project. Thank you so much, Mr. Costello. We have the Pride in Putnam Valley awarded to Marty Costello for your efforts in the creation of the elementary school's outdoor classroom. Thank you so much, and we hope you'll come to watch a class actually learn in the classroom.
I'll try to get there, I'll try to get there. Thank you so much. Well, I'd just like to say I was very, very happy to do it. Katie, of course, is my daughter, she teaches at the school. She approached me about it, and I said, "Katie, whatever you want, I'll do." I'm happy to do it.
Spoken like a true father.
Well, listen, I'm a former educator myself, so I know what it's about. I love the profession, I have great respect for it, and whatever I can do to help along the way, it's my pleasure, truly my pleasure, and I'd do anything for Katie, anyway. Thank you.
And with that, we'd like to ask Katie to come up for her Pride in Putnam Valley. And we hope that we'll see many classes in there. I've seen classes already going in and checking it out, and we hope with the spring we'll have many more. So, Pride in Putnam Valley awarded to Katie Odell for your efforts in the creation of the elementary school's outdoor classroom. Thank you very much, Katie.
I'm also part of the Sustainability Committee, so I'm hoping that this is also gonna just contribute to our work as a district as far as creating a sustainable future and just inspiring our students to fall in love with and care for the earth and the environment, so hopefully that'll continue in years to come and be sustainable, so, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'd also like to thank Mr. Pat Bellino, who helped facilitate and organize the whole creation of this classroom. He's now working on some shade plans because we had to cut down some trees, so we don't want it to be too sunny at times, but we had to do that for safety. But I do want to say, if you haven't seen the blackboard created by Katie's dad, it's a piece of art, and as someone told me, it's going to be there much longer than any of us are gonna be here. It's just, it's sturdy, it can withstand the harsh weather, it's lettered, Putnam Valley, it's beautiful. So, we do thank you for the time and the effort you put into that, that's no easy task. And I do want to say, as principal, I know that teachers are getting more and more willing to just sign up, little old-fashioned paper and pencil sign up to go use the outdoor classroom, and more and more classes are using it, so we're very fortunate to have such a unique learning space, so, thank you.
It seems very organic this evening, that we're dealing with all of these expressions of this belief we have in a sustainable Putnam Valley, a sustainable earth, and a sustainable world, and we're all part of it, and these are some examples of how it can happen. I think the cycling of the rocks, to me, is really very symbolic of that circle that we are all part of, so.
You know, Dr. Wills, I love the idea that we're taking our learning outside of the building. You know, we always talk about, a school is not about the brick and mortar, a school is about the education that goes into it, and I don't think you have to work for a school to be an educator. I think our whole community are educators, our parents are educators, so I love that we're kind of still, symbolically, going outside of the walls.
Yes, very special.
And as you're coming back to Sarah, I just spent two days up in the Catskills with my sixth grade, and one of my favorite moments was when one young man, who has obviously not been out in the Catskills very often, said, "Oh, look, that looks just like a lazy river at the water park." Like, this came first, the lazy river came second, but just educating and having people realize where things come from, so, very important work. All right, next presentation, Dr. Wills?
Yes. Actually, it's, no, we switched. Okay, so, as part of this, it seems that all of this has been produced for this evening, and actually, it all is, in a way. It's been a project that we've had for a while, and it was introduced, this notion of sustainability and how we would develop a curriculum on sustainability was introduced by the board with our energy performance contract that the board adopted here. And so, with that, we have been working, the district and staff and a committee has been working with SELF, which is the Children's Environmental Literacy Foundation, and we have two of the representatives of SELF here this evening, Victoria Garofi and Lisa McHale, and they're going to let the board know and our community know what we've been up to with our sustainability project.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. I'm Vicky Garofi, Director of Education at SELF, and I'm here with Lisa McHale, our SELF educator, and we're really excited to be here tonight. Thank you for taking the time out of your evening. We're really excited to share this project, which I know you're fully invested in, and we just want to personally thank Nicole and Jeremy and Fran for leading the team through a great project that we're honored to be part of. So, just to review our mission and our work and the heart of what we do, SELF was founded by Katie Ginsburg, who couldn't be here this evening, in 2003, where the initiative is to integrate K through 12 sustainability into curriculum, campus, and schools, and really preparing our students for future generations and to be citizens of this world, the sustainable world that we live in. Our approach has many different angles, but the majority of it is focused around education for sustainability and really diving deep into what's going on already and existing within these walls of the schools, and knowing that it doesn't just take the teachers or the team, but it's a community effort, it's the school, it's the campus, it's the grounds, it's getting out into the outdoor classrooms and outdoor spaces, sometimes not in the obvious spaces that we think to be, but just the screen-open, beautiful campus that you have here, and really digging in deeper to what we have available as resources, and to prepare these students to have a voice and to be active in their learning and to put to action what they're learning every day beyond the textbooks. So, a lot of times when we say, and I'm fairly new to the organization, so I'm really happy to dive in and share this, but, because it was a little bit of my own first impression, but you say sustainability and everybody thinks recycling, everybody thinks, you know, we just have a garden and that's it, but it's beyond that, it's beyond just an earth day, it's not a curriculum, we're not coming into your school saying, "Do this, don't do this." It's an approach, it's multiple pedagogies, it's teaching through the lens of sustainability across disciplines and grade levels, and it's purposeful, it has meaning, that fosters more socially just and sustainable world for our students. So, really, just to see the comparison up there of what it's not and what it is is really important and kind of strings this all together. So, as we can see, oh, and Lisa maybe can pass them, we have some of the big ideas of sustainability, which seem, they should be on the back of our business cards, but they're 12 entry points into the curriculum, 12 different key concepts that really frame our thinking of sustainability. And you can see in this picture that the leaves represent the economic, the environmental impacts, and the social equity. So, if you just take a minute just to look at this, as we go through our PowerPoint, we are gonna be showing pictures of your students and your teachers working with us, and so if you see, as we're going through this presentation, where big ideas might be popping out to you, please just, you know, give a shout out, we really want to engage you guys in this presentation and in our time here. So, these are what all of our teachers on the Sustainability Team are very familiar with, we've worked with them in our professional development workshops, and part of our project, which we'll get to next, is a little bit of our journey with the teachers, but it's really to get comfortable with these concepts and see where they emerge within your curriculum.
So, we started this journey last spring when we met with Fran and SELF toured the campus, and this summer, we were able to meet with eight teachers for a four-day intensive institute at Manhattanville College, and we want to thank you for these teachers, because they are wonderful teachers, they are doing this on their own time, and they are very dedicated to encompassing and incorporating education for sustainability within their classrooms, so I really applaud them. We are now in fall to spring of 2018, and we are going to be implementing some of these initiatives that we started in the summer, that the teachers started in the summer, into the school curriculum. We're also looking to expand the community, hoping to recruit more teachers. We will be having a summer institute here at Putnam Valley, and we invite all the teachers to come, and we're going to celebrate sustainability at Putnam Valley with a sustainability fair in the spring. These are just some of what we are calling the Tada Projects in the elementary, middle, and high school. These are projects that came out of the work done in the summer, and these are projects that the teachers are in the process of implementing this year, and I'll give you a moment to take a look at these, because it's really quite a very impressive list. We love our Tadas. And here are some of those Tada moments in action. The seventh grade did a pollinator project, and they actually designed something for a pollinator, you see them up there in the upper left-hand corner. The water bottle filling stations, which are in the middle and high school, are going to now also be in the elementary school. The middle school took a wonderful hike up Granite Mountain, you can see that in the bottom, I believe it was the fifth grade?
Any grade.
Any grade, any grade, oh, great. And they worked along with, I saw HHLT, Hudson Highlands Land Trust educators there with them, plus Hudson Highlands Audubon, Perry was there, I noticed. And they're also beginning to look at energy initiatives through the curriculum by looking at light bulbs and comparing light bulbs and their energy efficiency. One of the things that SELF and Putnam Valley agreed to do was to keep the community a part of our sustainability initiative, and so, we have, we haven't, I can't take any credit for this, the Putnam Valley has created this wonderful sustainability website, which will help to connect to the community. It has curriculum, it has links to resources, it has connections, and it's a great way to reach out to the community. And, thank you, right, it's a living document, so it's being added to on a regular basis, and so it's really wonderful to see it being updated. We also communicate with the teachers, we have a monthly conference with Fran and Jeremy and Nicole, and we also have a Word, a Google Doc, that we share with the teachers, and we share ideas, share resources, it's a communication tool between SELF and the Putnam Valley teachers. When SELF looks at a school district, we encompass what we call the three Cs, which are the curriculum, the community, and the campus, and we feel that you can't focus on one without incorporating all three of these, that the curriculum, the lesson plans, incorporating project-based learning, and connecting to the standards, which is really important work, is also connected to the campus initiatives, like the gardening, composting, outdoor spaces, and that really all of this is to help connect to real-world problems and solutions that are really coming to the forefront in our world at this point, really, you know, deep problems that require deep thinking and integrated solutions. Also, research has shown that connecting to the community by integrating EFS helps to keep these sustainability initiatives last over time, and this was research done by Shelburne Farms. If you go to the schools, you will see a really wonderful Wordle, and this Wordle was created last June when we met with the whole district, all of the district teachers, and they defined, they came up with, if they could define sustainability in a word, what would that word be? And all of the words were collated and created into a Wordle, and that's something that you'll see in all three schools. We know that collaboration is really important, and we were so happy that a team of teachers was able to come to the summer institute, because they can really support each other and collaborate, and doing this kind of work can be a little bit scary when you're going, when you have standards to meet, you have tests to prepare for, and what we're asking is to incorporate more project, problem, and place-based learning. And so, it's a little bit of a shift, and it will meet standards, and it will meet great expectations.
And also, just to support that last slide, it's not just one person, it really is a team effort, and it's been great to see that, working with these teachers in this amount of time on this project, because there's really great energy and there's great ideas that really emerge once they have the opportunity to all come together, which I know isn't sometimes all that frequent, but I know a lot of our time that we've seen these teachers really engage and get excited and see their passion about this. So, these pictures are actually from our last workshop, most recently, about two weeks ago, we were bringing the big ideas back in just to revisit it and refresh, and we had the opportunity to share this with the new teachers that joined in on the Professional Development Day. So, the Sustainability Team and the new group of teachers, they were able to kind of cross-pollinate a little bit, the ideas and the concepts, and teach each other, so it was really great to see in the classroom, and Fran participated, and Nicole's featured here, right in the middle, of really thinking about these big ideas. And so, we envisioned what's happening in the classroom, and as we're going through these big ideas, we kept talking more and more about outside and what's on campus, and where's the compost bin again, and what do we have here? So, we put our jackets on and we got outside. So, we grabbed our big ideas, we went outside, we found this stream, obviously, we're all aware of where this is, and just started kind of saying, "Oh, we see cycles, oh, diversity," and really kind of acted out, get there, see it, make the connections as the students would as they explore campus. So, a little activity for all of you, make sure you're paying attention, is any big ideas you see in the center picture, feel free to let us know. So, you can look at your chart, if you see out of those 12 concepts what might emerge in this picture that's near the stream, it might be a little dark, but give you a minute to give us a shout out. Systems! How?
Oh, you want details. Well, just, it is a little shaky of a picture, but it looks like there's some older foliage that is sort of dying or on the way out, and that will then continue to nourish the trees that are right behind it, so.
Exactly. So, we have seasonal cycles and systems going on here, where in the fall, leaves are starting to drop, it's at the end of the season, what changes do we see, what's happening? We'll get one more and we can go on. One that might not be so obvious.
Change over time.
Change over time, definitely. Diversity, the biodiversity of plants surrounding that area, so this is what we would pull out with the teachers and with the students.
It's also place.
And place, of course, yeah. I mean, the more you can look at one picture, the more things really start to become more visible.
Well, I think it's also, the whole idea of place and our emotional connection is very important, because we know more and more that nature and the environment has a very, very positive effect on our whole wellness and being. We had a science research student last year graduated, who did a wonderful project on green roofs, and she actually found evidence that workers who went out into these green, onto the green roof, actually had come back to work with a different feeling about what they did.
A little refreshed, a little fresh air is good for everybody. So, as we continue to explore outside, one of the activities that we do with the teachers and the students is a diversity hunt, and that's taking these little paint chip cards from a hardware store and going outside. At first, it might seem like such a simple activity, "Oh, we're going out, we're just matching it to nature, great, what do we get out of this?" Well, we got a whole lot out of it once we came back inside, and as you can see, you're matching these colored chips with, in the middle, it looks a little dark, it's a little more vibrant on my view here, but they have orange leaves in their hands matched with different shades there, and then we also found this teal color on the left, and we thought, "Where are we gonna find this color in nature?", but it was actually part of our built environment, which is also part of our systems and our cycles that surround us. So, it was really great to see these connections where it might not have been such an obvious color find, and we came back into the classroom and just the concepts that were emerging from the teachers, and remembering that we had the new group of teachers in there, kind of seeing what this whole sustainability thing is all about, and they really got engaged and pretty passionate about what we were doing. And also, while we were outside, is identifying leveraging existing assets. So, again, we came upon the compost bin that looked like it hadn't really been worked on or needs to, you know, come back to life again, and then you have the garden there, so really finding these connections on how we can continue these projects, to keep them going, to get, you know, if it's near the high school, let's get the middle school, let's get the elementary school, I know the elementary school is further down the road and has their own garden, but to really keep the communication of projects and student engagement across all grade levels. And as we were walking through- And as we were walking through, we also found, obviously, these other areas that were very obvious in nature, classrooms, having benches, very accessible benches, and tables, and little nooks throughout this campus, just, I love that picture on the left, that just seemed to be this little archway of trees, where you can really dig into poetry and art and really get inspired. So it might not be this obvious, maybe, science connection, but there's so many other entry points into these spots on campus. So, in thinking of pushing through these boundaries of what you guys have accessible here at Putnam Valley, here's, obviously, as we know, this traditional school system, where kind of everything fits into all the little boxes, the community, the campus, the individual schools, individual classrooms, then the individual student, but with SELF's support and our goals of education for sustainability, we really want to make those walls more permeable, and knock down the walls, and make sure that we have this integration and collaborative efforts among schools, the campus, the community, and that these children throughout all grades are growing and engaging in their educational experiences that surround them. And?
One of the joys of working with Putnam Valley is that it's a really unique school in terms of all of your energy initiatives. Having the geothermal in the high school and the middle school, and now beginning to drill wells in the elementary school, provides really wonderful opportunities for place-based learning, getting those kids out to see what's happening at the wells, and as a part of the energy initiatives. The solar photovoltaics will save a lot of energy, a lot of CO2, and equivalent to 265 metric tons of CO2 will be sequestered each year by using these photovoltaics. And it opens up a really great conversation about CO2 in our atmosphere, and what are some of the consequences of increasing CO2 levels in the atmosphere. When we work with schools, a lot of times we'll ask, okay, what are the outcomes in terms of students? So if you're looking at a graduating 12th grade student, what do you hope that that student graduating will know, value, and be able to do? And this is something that we've done with our teachers, and we'd like to briefly do this with you, to get your input. So, what do you think that a Putnam Valley student should know, value, and be able to do by the time they reach 12th grade?
And we will share the feedback from each of the levels with you on the next couple of slides, but just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to think about, because I mentioned there's some correlation between your view, the teacher's views, and the overall Putnam Valley vision of what a sustainable system is. So, again, just kind of shout out maybe some characteristics that you're thinking about, that you want these students to have, and we'll give you a little sneak preview of what our results show.
Sure, I'll go first. So, I think that students should know the role they play within a sustainable system. I think they have to value the system as a whole, and what it was like before they entered, and what it'll be like after. And I think they should be able to take steps to help preserve that environment, to keep it as close to as it was when they first entered.
To gather accurate information about choices that are to be made, and then to make those choices, and then perhaps present their findings, their reasoning to others.
I'm going to jump into value, to know that they, their role is for leaving a legacy, to have the value of leaving a legacy for other people, it's not just your lifetime, but it's many, many lifetimes beyond yours. And I would echo Jeremy, the taking steps, you know, of how to do that.
So, I know the type here is a little bit small.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yes, that's the outdoor classroom. So these were things, these were the reflections from the teachers in the elementary school. And so, know and understand is in blue, value on mine is in red, right there, it looks like it's a black type. And then be able to do is in green. So those are some of the things. And we're going to come back to these, because I did highlight a couple of things that appear to be consistent throughout the different schools. This is the middle school, and their reflections. And the high school. And just going back to the elementary school, there were some interesting things that were consistent across all the different schools, and one of them was empowerment, to empower the students to know that they can make a difference, and to understand that resources are valuable, and to accept responsibility. And there was an interesting one that was pretty consistent, which was to accept failure. And I think really what they're talking about is building resiliency. And then, of course, in the high school, the process, understanding as you get older, the process of making meaningful change, and knowing that what you do can affect the environment directly.
And just to also add to that, it's nothing that can just happen in high school, the continuation of starting at elementary and building on it each year, really supports the whole idea of full systems change, and full approach to the whole system, that the younger, in that kindergarten class, how valuable that is as they progress through their 12th grade year. So, in conclusion, to wrap this up, our next big step that we're heading towards, that'll kind of be the capstone event of SELF's work with Putnam Valley, is recruiting for the June Summer Institute that will take place here, where we will recruit new teachers to join in on the sustainability train with the rest of the team, so that we can continue to turnkey this sustainability initiative. And again, the idea of making and maintaining the connections, maintaining the work, building the momentum, so that at last, remembering the three circles of combining the community, the curriculum, the campus, nature, and the outdoors. So that's what we're working towards throughout the next, this end of the year, into the spring and the end of the school year. So, the project next steps, just bullets a few more of where we're going. We will continue to maintain our ongoing sustainability project support, being available, phone calls, conferences, updating our Google Drive, making resources available. We do still have many more visits and PD workshops that we're providing in the spring, preparing for the Sustainability Fair, which is May 17th, the Summer Institute, that is unique for you guys. We do our own Summer Institute that you participated in over our summer, but we're coming to you to meet your needs specifically, so that's what's unique about having this time with us here in your school. And then the idea of the turnkey teacher training. And, oop, my last slide got cut off, but we had our contact information on there, to reach us, our emails and our website. But thank you guys for your time, and if you have any questions, me and Lisa are here. Thank you.
Yeah, just one.
Sorry.
Selfeducation.org is our website, and we would be delighted if you visit our website and learn more about our organization.
There it is.
Ah, there we go.
Our website is there.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? You must be very happy with yourself.
I am very happy.
Yeah.
The night is going really well for me.
I just, I guess I have a comment, although I very much appreciate my name being included with the amazing work that's being done. If I deserve credit for anything, it was for asking Nicole, when she had been in Putnam Valley for, I think, seven minutes, if she would attend the institute and take the lead. And it's truly been impressive to see the work that's been accomplished by Nicole, the teachers, and Vicky, Lisa, and Katie from SELF. It's really been impressive, and I've sort of been on the outside looking in, but they've totally taken the lead and driven this initiative to where it is. So really, they deserve all the credit and the kudos, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I've loved the passion, the teachers that talk about it, they're really excited, and, you know, they're adding work, you know, so to speak, to their classrooms, but they're excited about it. So, that's great.
Certainly, just a real quick comment, certainly, well beyond, above and beyond what I asked for a year ago, as part of the Sustainable Putnam Valley, and to make the Energy Performance Contract meaningful for the district in the greater context of things. So I can't thank you all enough for your enthusiasm and support of sustainability at Putnam Valley, so thank you.
Well, we're still going to stay outside, right? We're still, because we're going to be talking about fall sports now, so we're still going to be in the outdoors, so our next presentation...
Make sustainability into it, Brian. I'm going to do it, unless it's volleyball.
That's true, unless it's volleyball.
Hello, everyone, is it on?
Yes.
Very good. So I've been asked, is this a baby beard or a November beard, and the answer is just yes. So we'll see what happens after this month, but at this moment, here we are. And I was surprised that Dave, I thought last year you had one too, so I thought for sure.
Mine comes in January.
Does it? Okay. Very good, all right. So we have fall highlights for 2017 here. We have our volleyball team went nine and 10 this year, and lost in the first round of the sectional playoffs to Nanuet. We had all-league and all-conference player Rosanna Cruz. We had all-league players Christine Turner, Maya Burt, and Genesis Cruz. Our cheerleading team has all-league and all-section winners Kiana Thompson and Caitlin Sigmund, and all-league winners Abigail Alvarez, Megan O'Leary, Teresa Sigmund, and Jenna Stat. The girls soccer team had an unprecedented year this year, they went 13-1 in the regular season, which is incredible. They did win the league title, they had two sectional wins, one over Valhalla and one over Hastings, before losing to Irvington in the semifinals. And anybody that was at that game, I know a few of you were, it was a great game, the girls held their own, and Irvington was just very, very good. We had all-league and all-section winners Morgan Wintergrotoff and Madeline Deegan for the girls soccer team, along with all-league winners Caitlin Cohen, Lindsay Cohen, Arisale Vidal, Catherine Maza, Emma Rippon, and Jessica Denick. For our field hockey team, went four, nine, and three this year, another step in the right direction. We had a loss in the first round to Albertus Magnus, which, for those of you that do follow sports, is always an anomaly, because they play A and double-A teams, so they kind of skew the bracket, but you didn't hear me say that. We had all-league winner Taylor Simpson, and all-league honorable mention winner Danielle Cunningham and Joanna Pelk. Our cross-country team went three and four in the regular season, which is not really indicative of how they did, they had many, many third-place finishes, when we didn't have as many sheer numbers as other teams when we went to competitions. We had senior Connor Van Riper head to the state tournament, and Brona Cassidy, who's an eighth grader, actually was an alternate finishing 11th in the championship. We had all-league award winners Connor Van Riper, Joe Abate, Michael Tompkins, Dora Rippon, Sammy Palmo, and Brona Cassidy. We had all-league honorable mention Frank Bobico and Paige Lee. For boys soccer, they finished the regular season at seven and nine, they did go on to win a pretty thrilling overtime victory at Pleasantville, they went into double overtime and it went to penalty kicks, and they lost in the second round to Rynek, and it was quite close, it was a 2-0 loss in the end, but those two goals, it could have been very easily 1-0, just within the opening minute they scored, and then the very, very end of the game there. All-league recipient Alec Irving and Emilio Sanchez, and we had all-league honorable mention Brian McBride. The football team finished the regular season four and three, then we went to Valhalla and lost in the opening round of sectionals. All-league and all-conference winners Darnell Schillingford, John Listwann, and Jason White, and all-league Adam Rukai. The girls swim team, which is, this is our second year of the merger, we did have a new head varsity coach here, so, you know, that's always, how is this going to go? Swimming has a lot of responsibilities for a head coach, there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of data entering and things like that, so you're always, you know, very hopeful, and she was tremendous, very, very good. They finished the regular season six, two, and one, they took third out of 11 in the league championships, which is excellent, and we had three athletes actually compete in sectionals. They did not actually award their all-league, all-section winners just yet, so we don't have that, but we have Emily Danzinger competed in the 200 and the 500 free, we had Danielle Taps in the 200 and 500 free, and Leah Frankel in the 100 back. And when it gets dark at 4:30, it can only mean one thing, and that is, we are entering the winter season. So, all the teams are underway, we, with a few bumps, we got registration done, we are working with about four substitute nurses, so it has been quite a challenge, but they have really stepped up and done everything that they can to actually get that to be as smooth as possible. So we're really very thankful for those substitute nurses. Without them, and with me being out for the few days with the birth of my son, it was a little stressful being home, but they got it done. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, certainly, the performance is important, but I do go to a number of games, and I've heard our opposing parents talk about the class act we are, over and over this particular fall. At our senior night, we gave flowers to the seniors on the other team, when there was one very tough loss, the sincere congratulations by our girls to the other girls, because they knew they could have just as easily been on the losing end of that one game. Class act has been used a lot, they have a lot of heart, but they are very classy and they have incredible sportsmanship, so, let's see if we can carry that through in the winter.
There's been a concerted effort to create a very positive culture in our athletic program, and in general in our schools, this has been a goal that we've had, and, you know, I think, you know, as in any large group activity, you know, there are bumps in the road, but overall, it's a very, very fine culture of sportsmanship, and collaborative as well as competitive.
Moving on to reports, I'll call on Sarah for the student representative report.
Hey, good evening. To start off, Putnam Valley High School put on their fall drama just two weeks ago. This year, they performed at Doll's House, the acting was truly incredible, and it was clear how much work the students that were involved put into the production, whether that be onstage or offstage. We are very lucky to have such a strong and well-supported theater program at our school, and it's always wonderful to view the productions that are put on. We are all now looking forward to viewing the Spring Musical. The Make a Difference Club in Putnam Valley High School students are truly making a difference in the lives of others. Students under the direction of Mrs. Cobb and Mrs. Cason made Christmas cards for a young boy dying of cancer. The Gratitude Festival is being held on Monday, November 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. This is a night of live music and poetry that is organized by students in the Tri-Music Honor Society. It is being held at the Tompkins Corner Cultural Center. Please come out to see this landmark church-turned-cultural center to view poems, songs, and show your gratitude as we approach Thanksgiving. All are welcome. Last week, a group of students at the high school were inducted into the Spanish and French National Honor Societies. In order to be inducted into these honor societies, students must have taken four years of foreign language and have maintained a high academic success in those subjects for all four years. Congratulations to all who were inducted. Just last week, the Putnam Valley High School History Club made a beautiful tribute for Veterans Day. They recreated to scale the Vietnam War Memorial in one of the hallways. Every pain and every name was exact to what is carved in Washington, DC. It definitely made many students stop and think about the service of our nation's veterans. In sports, again, we give a big congratulations to Connor Van Riper. As part of the cross-country team, he made it to the state competition just this past weekend. Last Thursday, students and community members rallied around Connor and cheered him through a hallway walkthrough. Larry Cobb and the Putnam Valley Fire Department escorted Connor out of the campus with a firetruck. A big congratulations to Connor for his amazing accomplishment. Finally, we give a big congratulations to the music students who were accepted into the NISMIA Area All-State Festival. to the music students who were accepted into the NISMA Area All-State Festival. In the mixed choir, Jasmine Gelford, Jessica O'Hare, Gavin Mitchell, Dakota Pignon, and Chris Turner were accepted. In the treble choir, Emily Mizella, Michelle Pryor, and Vanessa Angarino were accepted. And finally, in the band section, we have Casey Dath. These students were incredibly, worked incredibly hard and received high scores on their NISMA individual performances last year, which is what qualifies them to participate in the Area All-State Festival this fall. So, congratulations to all.
Dr. Luff?
Yes, I'll just start by saying that it's inspiring to hear you, Sarah, talk about what the students are doing, you know, in the schools, particularly in this case at the high school predominantly. But in our other schools as well, so much is going on. I know Mr., I know Dr. Luff will be talking about that as well. But it's just to hear the kind of high-level thinking and the ethical consideration. The Vietnam Memorial, the Puerto Rico contribution. We, I was just at the last meeting of the Make a Difference Club where Jason, who was the pharmacist in town, was there to actually report on his trip. So, we came full circle. And he, there is a diorama in the corridor here showing the receipt of all of these pharmaceuticals by our, you know, by those recipients who needed these, the doctors and the patients who needed these medications. So, when our students see that, they feel rightly so that they've accomplished something very, very important. It gives them that sense of agency that they can do and that they can make things happen, even, you know, when there are tragic situations in the world. I'd like to mention that, again, I just want to reiterate that gratitude festival is something very special for Thanksgiving. Also, the MAGMA program had its special award its last session last Sunday. And this is another example of our students, student volunteers doing something for the community and for so many of our students. And I know that Natalie and Ralph both took an enormous-
Yeah.
-had an enormous part, and David Spittle throughout the years, working on this project. So-
Yeah, I do have to just jump in here. You know, our students, our high school students truly amaze me. This past Sunday, when I went, there was, you know, multiple students working with really some pretty student, with some students with pretty significant disabilities. And I'm just going to give you an example of like how amazing they are. One student in particular, they called me over because they needed a little, a little bit of help. And, you know, after we sort of, you know, got the student settled, I said to the student, you know, what do you think we could do next time? And she said, you know what I wish? I mean, she had just struggled. She'd been, you know, really struggled with him. And she said, I just wish there wasn't a break. You know, he or she was going through this really hard time with the student, and all she kept thinking of is, now we have to have a break between now and the spring, and now he's going to have a break in, in seeing me every week. And to me, that speaks volumes. It was not about her, it was not about her struggle. It was really about helping, helping the student who comes from Yonkers all the way up here, because there's no other services for students with disabilities to participate in programs like this. So, his parent brings him up here once a week. So, I really commend our students and their dedication. I have met with them multiple times on giving them strategies and, you know, picture symbols and all of that. And they have taken it to really a great level. And I'm so proud of them. And I, it, it really is, it stands, the work that they do is what, it really is a reflection of this community.
I know, also Natalie, you were going to say something about Melissa Cefaro. Why don't you mention it? Because that was quite an award for special education.
Oh, with the CSE-
Yes.
-work she does. So, part of Melissa Cefaro, Dr. Cefaro's work is, you know, obviously chairing meetings here in the district. She also brings in a lot of students and is out in our community often. And she was just chosen to now mentor other people. It is really a difficult field, and I think that it is quite an honor that she is able to now go out and mentor surrounding chair people, people who are beginning their administrative careers.
That's great. And, and with that, I'd just like to transition to our psychologists. This is Psychologist Recognition Week, Appreciation Week. And again, we are fortunate to have an outstanding staff of psychologists. We have five psychologists and a social worker in our district, plus a student support specialist at our high school. And at this time particularly, we're seeing so many emotional issues arising with our students, anxiety and stress and types of things that perhaps are more unusual now. And these psychologists are up for this and are doing incredible work throughout our district. And I wanted to mention them this evening on their special week. I also wanted to mention the fact that at our high school, we have a spotlight program where the principal started this, Ms. Centriari, three years ago. And it's an opportunity for teachers to nominate and to celebrate students who do things that are special in the classroom, not necessarily in the area of academics, but in the area of citizenship, in the area of kindness to others, speaking up in class, participating, making the class work, inspiring the teachers. And I just wanted to name those students who were named today by their teachers, because this is something that we sometimes overlook. We give academic awards. So, here are the students who are named. Caitlin Carroll, Emily Hausgen, Ethan Grossman, Una Park, James Salvia, Jordan Tucker, Marissa Bach, Sarah Broas, Connor Van Riper, Haley Lewis, Dylan Garache, Nicole Christopherson, Joseph Mele, Abraham Q., Neazha Reeves, Madeline Barti, Avery Thorpe, Matthew Richards, and Ariella Rogers. And all of those students have done something special, and their teachers have nominated them to be given an award for that. And it's a wonderful ceremony. It's very, very moving, and parents are there. And I think this is something that, you know, we can feel very proud to develop in our school district, that we see students as a whole. We see all of the students and all the things they can do and they can accomplish. I'd like to also just note one of our students, Aaliyah Steele. We heard her here report, if you remember, a couple of years ago on STEM, and she's running a program. She's trying to recruit more students for a girls program, Think Steam for Girls. And she had one of her programs today. We were able to, Dr. Luff and I were able to participate in, in what she did today and how, the kind of preparation she does is really incredible. I'd like to just spend a moment going over some of the questions that we got as a result of the start time. If you remember, we sent out a great deal of information on start time in the last few weeks. And last year, we worked on this. And as you know, we're going to be commencing the later start time in the fall. And so, when we sent out the most recent information, we received some comments back from our blackboard information. And I wanted to go over the questions and answers. And Mr. Burrow is here to help. So, you know, if some of the answers need to be edited-
Is it yours?
It is mine. It should be shared with you. So, one of the, in fact, I also wanted to mention, and I have a link in this question and answer, which I will post, we will post this on the website. It's a FAQ, you know, frequently asked questions. We're going to continue that. And there's also been an article in The Atlantic Magazine on this topic of the start time and why parents are afraid of the start time, because it is a change and change is difficult. But there are so many benefits, as we pointed out, to the health of the student, that we are hoping that once people start to get used to it and to the change, they'll be able to participate and feel very good about the change. So, the district received eight comments at this point on the later start information that was sent to the community. Two of the comments were in favor of the change, very positive. And the following are responses to the six comments on the later start information that were either opposed or had questions about the change. So, the first question was, how will this impact students who work right after school? And I answered this way. The district will certainly examine any concerns regarding students who work at the end of the school day, which is now 1:50. And as you know, the school day would then end at 2:40. We would ask that students who cannot begin work at 2:30 or 2:40, contact the assistant principal to see how their situation can be accommodated. We also would want to find out how many students would be affected. And Ms. Centriari also comments that this is difficult to answer. And, you know, work doesn't begin until they're 16 or 17. But in reality, we do arrange schedules now to help students with their workday, and we would continue to do that. What would be the impact on clubs and sports? So, what I stated in the answer was, our athletic directors provided the schedule that will provide continued opportunity for athletics. The clubs will be run as they currently are in the middle school after school. The clubs in the high school would potentially only be impacted in the winter sports season. This is due to the limit in facilities and the number of teams needing these spaces. There will be some accommodations for clubs to be offered at some points during the school day. This is something we're looking at, particularly at the high school. In some instances, students will have to choose between athletics and club participation, particularly at the middle school, where they now have clubs before school. They ride on the high school bus. Clubs will no longer be offered before school at the middle school. Perhaps you want to comment on anything in that explanation that you'd like to amplify or-
I think, I think it sums it up pretty well, actually. I think the important thing to note is that this was a collaboration between all of the building principals and the district-level administrators, myself included, in order to come up with the best possible solution with the least impact. But there is going to unfortunately be an impact when you make this type of a change. I think we, we really are at a place that I'm very comfortable with it. I think the building principals have done a good job compromising. And, and I think you're going to see that although you never can predict and make a perfect outcome without actually walking through the door, this is going to be pretty darn good. And I think it's, the benefits with having our children be able to sleep in and get to school at a little bit of a later time, even though it's, it's not a greater time, will be very positive. And I think it's, almost every other district in the area is already doing it. And we will see things pop up, but that's what we're here for, is to take on challenges and to come up with solutions. And that's what we're going to do.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Burrow. One of the questions was, why do we need more sleep now when we have been starting early for 17 years? Well, as Ms. Centriari pointed out, actually, it hasn't been 17 years that everybody's been here. I think they started, actually all coming here, I think maybe 16 years ago, 15, 15 years ago. 15 years ago. Most recent- Most recent research on sleep has been an important influence in the decision. There is ample evidence that not obtaining enough sleep affects health throughout one's life. In addition, safety on the road is a concern that can have tragic consequences. And there have been many examples of that in the research. Attendance has been a serious problem with the early start time. High school students already use the middle school bus when they are tardy. So, some of the things that people have asked about, we're trying to respond to specifically, even though we had this information in the larger portion, we want to have this frequently asked questions list for them. One of the questions was, will parents be affected by the change? Students at the middle school and high school will leave at the same time. So, in some ways, that's, that's a plus. There will no longer be clubs offered before the start of the day, as I, as I mentioned before. So, that would be a different situation. But the high school students would still be there in some of those homes. Because the last question was on the, it wasn't a long enough time. Why are we doing this when we can only give 40 minutes? Because we cannot move the start time beyond 8 o'clock, the change will not have the impact we're seeking. Instead, we are curtailing student opportunities, this was the question, and impacting the schedules. How can we justify this well-intended but inadequate change? While the change will be 40 minutes, studies indicate that even a half-hour difference can improve student health and well-being in school. That's part of what we studied and we learned. Attendance can improve, and safety on the road can be affected as well. We're looking to make middle school more meaningful, I'm sorry, we're looking to make school more meaningful and supportive of students in their quest for balance as well as achievement. So, I think that's the important piece here, that the improved sleep opportunities does create an opportunity for that balance that we're looking for, to help with emotional health as well as academic success. I did want to make a correction. The Roaring Brook Run, at one point I stated would be cut in half. It will be cut by a third. It was corrected. And there was also a question, what do we mean by high school students having a moderating effect on the behavior of middle, middle school students? High school students, when in the presence of younger students, tend to tamp down some of the more active and disruptive behaviors, and also tend to keep the decorum on the buses. So, it's actually, it does have a positive effect. They usually do not mix with the younger students, but they do keep it from getting, you know, there's that tempering effect that you have when you have a greater range. How will traffic on the campus be affected? A design for the bus and parent drop-off is in process, keeping in mind the safety of students. That's being worked on now. And I also will provide in this posting a link to this recent article in Atlantic, which talks about providing greater encouragement, if you will, to parents and schools that contemplate this change, which has a worthy goal. At this point, I'd like to ask if Mr. Spittle would talk about the Facilities Committee, and we're doing some very exciting work there.
Sure. I'll just give everybody an update. We've had three meetings that have been very well-attended, about 40 people at each. We've had representations, representation from a lot of teachers, which is great. So, they're the ones who are using the building the most. Administrators, parents, community members, and, and town officials. Sam Oliverio and Steve McKay have been at all three meetings and given a lot of input. And we seem to be building consensus around a few ideas. And I'll put this through the big sustainability idea of change over time. The elementary school was built and designed in the 1930s, with a few modifications since. The middle school was built and designed in the early 70s. And they were built to deliver education to our children based on what the, the best thinking at the time was. You remember a teacher standing in front of a blackboard with rows of, of students neatly, you know, learning the lesson of the day. And things are different now. And so, we've, we're building consensus- we're building consensus around, uh, the idea that we would like to upgrade, modify, and reconfigure the space in all three of our schools to meet twenty-first century thinking about the best way to deliver excellence in education. I just came up with that. I hope the, uh, the committee agrees that that's, that's basically where we're going. And, um, just to give an idea of what we're talking about, um, with a, a change in the, the, the configuration or, or the classroom, um, you know, that, that old model from the nineteen thirties of how to deliver, uh, lessons, um, now, these days, there's, there's, uh, a lot more, um, need for collaboration for smaller groups, uh, and project-based learning that we've all heard about, and we've made some accommodations here at the high school and middle school to this, this newer, uh, more modern way to deliver education and, um, and, uh, but, we can, we can go a lot further, and there's some very exciting ideas that have come up in, in these really, really great discussions we've had with, you know, a lot of contributions from, 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 uh, a lot of really talented people in our community, um, about how, how to do that, how to, how to upgrade, modify, and reconfigure the space in the district, um, uh, to, to deliver this twenty-first century education. And it's not just, I mean, that, that example I gave was in, in academics, but, uh, you know, we're also thinking, uh, around, um, arts, performing arts, athletics, extracurricular activities, uh, and thinking about, because we all know those are delivered in a different way than they were in the nineteen thirties and nineteen seventies as well. Um, people, uh, didn't, didn't do athletics the same way outside. We, we went out and, uh, and went fishing or running in the woods or whatever we used to do. So, anyway, um, that, that's the, um, that's, that's it. We, we have another meeting. When's our next meeting?
December sixth.
December sixth, and, um, I invite other people to come. It's really exciting. Everybody's, uh, um, invigorated at the end of every one of these meetings because of the, the collaboration we're finding with all the different stakeholders, and, um, and that's, that's it. And Jeremy, I don't know what I missed, but you were, you were great at leading one of the-
I would just say that one other thing that will happen on December sixth will be that an architect will be there-
Right.
-and to have some visuals, and we'll have another more in-depth discussion on the fiscal-
Yeah, that's what we're looking at. Jill's done a great job giving us the, the fiscal landscape, uh, within which we have to work. We understand that, um, but we're getting, um, more presentations on that and presentations on, um, what some of these, uh, new, uh, classrooms look like, that, uh, other schools around the country are, are building when they're building from scratch to see what works best, uh, for modern education here.
Yes. Oh, my, looks at your curriculum report. Moving right to the curriculum report. Dr. Luff?
Thank you. So, on November seventh, we held our second superintendent's conference day of the year. Um, really, the theme was around this whole idea of building relationships aligned with our board goal, and this idea that one small change, um, can lead to much larger change. So, we started as a whole faculty here in the pack. Um, we actually saw a very inspirational video that kicked off the day, and after a few short presentations, we broke up into K to twelve small group discussions focused on that idea of one small change. The conversations in those small groups in that one hour, in many ways, were the highlight of the day. Um, hearing stories from individuals sharing, uh, small changes in their life that sort of brought them more to where they are today, a small change that made them decide to become a teacher, and then that led into more, trying to reach a consensus around what's one small change we can make as a district that would have the greatest impact, and reviewing the responses from each of the small groups, that whole idea of relationships is really what surfaced, and a variety of different ways in which we as educators can work to better establish relationships with students. Um, so we're looking to gear future professional development to meet some of those small changes that were requested, uh, by the small groups. In the afternoon, we ran teacher-facilitated workshops for everyone except for the elementary school, who had parent-teacher conferences. We ran fourteen different workshops, all facilitated by teachers, administrators, and teaching assistants. The topics of those workshops varied from student engagement to authentic learning and design thinking, to Google Forms, classroom and interactive displays, self-held the workshop, as we heard about before, and we even covered, uh, stress management in a workshop. So, the feedback was extremely high, uh, really, credit goes out to the teachers and administrators who volunteered to facilitate groups, and if it wasn't for their willingness to do so, the entire day could have been spent in the pack. Uh, so the teachers really enjoyed having choice, being able to select workshops that were relevant to them, being in a small group setting, and really hearing from someone who offered the practical knowledge about how those things apply in their classrooms. Recently, I attended a district-wide AAS meeting. Uh, the reading teachers talked a lot about the current ELA AAS structures, including entrance and exit criteria, and they discussed renewing our focus on tier-one interventions and in developing, uh, including the development of a resource list for teachers, uh, to make sure that they drive those tier-one interventions before referring to students. Classroom observations are in full go. Um, I think, I think Jeanette did five today, but just some summaries of what I've seen, I think I have seventeen, I've just finished my seventeenth, and I've really been impressed by the classroom learning environments I've seen and teacher's ability to build relationships with students. I've yet to walk in a class where students aren't smiling and happy, and yes, that includes high school classes, and really, the relationships between teachers and students has really been impressive. Students have been engaged and actively participated in all the lessons, and some feedback that I've been providing is encouraging teachers to find opportunities for more student-to-student discussions, more open-ended and higher-order questions, and finding opportunities to empower students to become more active, not just participants, but contributors in the learning. Our district professional development committee meeting, uh, committee met. We discussed, we debriefed the superintendent's conference day, and we began to revise our district's, uh, professional development plan. The district-wide Yale Ruler Implementation Team met. We talked about building action plans, end-of-year goals, shared resources, and had a conference call with our implementation coach. I know each building continues to move forward with that implementation with the goal of finishing our rollout to adults this year and beginning our rollout to students next year, and I know that there's other building-level highlights there. And I know we already discussed the fall drama, the international dinner, and the Facilities Planning Committee. In the elementary school, they held their parent-teacher conferences, which, from what I hear, are very well-attended. Data teams have met, reviewed student progress and support services when appropriate. They've begun writing their charter. I know the entire faculty got together, uh, led by Lauren Soprano and Sue O'Connell, to, they had a whole plan in place for how to get everyone's input on creating that charter, so I know that's been, um, really written, and they're just seeking feedback at this point. We had a teacher or a psychologist from the high school lead a student emotional wellness workshop for all the elementary school teachers, so that was during a faculty meeting and was very interesting. I got to sit in and listen. The Building Steering Committee was met, talked about school initiatives and parent feedback. There was additional trainings for lunch monitors and teaching assistants, uh, where we seek their input in what types of professional development they need. I got to see a piece of the third and fourth grade gym show the other day. I was, yes, a participant in the third and fourth grade gym show a long time ago. If there was video cameras, they would have me juggling. Uh, just looking forward, there's a Thanksgiving food drive taking place. Scholastic Book Fair is going on right now. The gym show we talked about, and the PVES musical additions are taking place this week for the Magic Treehouse. It's a marked show. The elementary school, they've held both ELA and math curriculum meetings. The ELA curriculum meeting, where they were looking at the assessments from last year, and with the focus on the writing standards. I know the teachers were broken up by grade-level groups, and each were given a task. Uh, it was really impressive to see the teachers work together. It's a very well-attended meeting. I think every ELA teacher, reading teacher, anyone associated with such participates in those meetings, and it's great to get everyone together. And for anyone who's ever witnessed Nicole run a meeting, it's, uh, there's bells and timers, and, and she definitely keeps them on task, so that was great work. The math curriculum meeting, uh, also took place. They're also looking at the math assessment and looking at student work, specifically how do students perform in book three, identifying both strengths and weaknesses, and using that information to guide some of their instructional points for this year. If our students are gonna take the test and we're gonna spend time, and they're gonna spend the time taking the test, it's our duty as educators to use that information to drive our instruction, and that's really what both groups of teachers are doing, where we're learning from how the students did the previous year, making changes to our curriculum instruction to make sure that next year's students are better prepared. Tomorrow, the seventh graders are going to Sturbridge Village, and next week, the entire middle school is going to the Cortland Town Center to see the movie Wonder. I think we're taking like seven, six entire movie theaters? Seems crazy.
Five hundred and forty kids.
They all read the books.
And that was a common book read for the whole school, right? That's awesome.
Mm-hmm.
So, at the high school, the, they formed collegial circles to share best practices among teachers and improve collaboration. Ninth-grade literacy group is continuing to work on strategies to address the ninth-grade reading issues. Five special education teachers are going to Briar Cliff to observe the IDE, uh, designed learning centers. The department coordinators are set up a visit to Dobbs Ferry High School to investigate how they implement their IB diploma pathways. They have, also had a faculty meeting connecting with, uh, focused on connecting with students. This is, uh, one of the strategies we heard during our Yale whole district meeting, and I actually thought it was really interesting. What they did was they took a post and they wrote every student's name on a post-it and stuck it on a wall, and then teachers went up in rotations and pulled down two students in which they felt they had a personal connection with, not just someone they knew through class, but someone who they knew things about their personal life, someone that they think may approach them if they needed something, and they rotated through, taking two students at a time, and then at the end, they stopped and looked at any post-its that remained on the wall, and then had a conversation about how do we establish relationships with these students, how do we make sure that these students have someone they can go to, and how do we make sure we create personal connections with those students. So, it was very powerful for all involved, and I think it was a, an eye-opener for many. And if you asked them to identify who those students are, it was pretty amazing. It was the middle of the road, well-behaved, not academically challenged student. It wasn't a high-achieving student, it wasn't a struggling student, but it was actually those, some of those middle-level students that somehow had fallen through the cracks. So, I think that was a very interesting conclusion they came to, and I know they're continuing to work on strategies to make sure they connect with all students. I know that Dr. Willis had just discussed the Thanksgiving workshop. I'm very impressed with Leah's willingness to continue to facilitate these sessions and try to get, um, her fellow students to participate, and the IB authorization planning in progress continues. Um, I had a session with Sandy and Matt during the superintendent's conference day to again begin planning for the application and the development of curriculum and all that other fun stuff that's coming up. That's it. Thanks.
I do have one thing I want to share with the board. Um, I held a workshop with the entire K-12, um, Special Education Department, and, and I know that they would want me to, to read this. I did a survey after, and, um, they wrote, um, one of the comments was, "I really loved our department time together. Uh, that time solidified us as a K-12 team. Um, it showed the investment our district and our leaders, um, having, continuing to, uh, allow us to collaborate in order to create the best environment for our students with disabilities." So, um, I know that they were really appreciative and, um, wanted me to extend that to you guys.
PTA, PTSA report.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Casey. I am the corresponding secretary and middle school teacher liaison for our PTA with some updates. So, the PTA is hosting the middle school teacher, sorry, the middle school student of the month breakfast tomorrow morning, and we send our congratulations to our November recipients. The PTA Arts and Education helped to fund the seventh grade trip to Sturbridge Village tomorrow in Massachusetts, and we hope they have a great time and enjoy this learning experience. We also have the hockey game at West Point tomorrow night. This weekend to see Wonder, one dollar from every ticket benefits the Putnam Valley PTA. All tickets bought up until Sunday, November nineteenth at midnight, even for future showtimes count. Please use the Fandango link posted on our Facebook page, and that was sent down our email in order for your movie ticket purchase to count for us. We are looking for volunteers for our fourth grade spirit committee. Our first meeting will be on October thirtieth at 7:00 PM in the elementary school library. Um, one of our most beloved events, the holiday reads, will be on Saturday, December sixteenth, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the elementary school. Volunteers are needed to help set up, run the event, and clean up. We also need people to help volunteer to read their favorite holiday books to students. To volunteer for any of these events mentioned tonight or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org. Like our Facebook page for more information and upcoming events, and we'd like to wish all of our Putnam Valley families a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I love the proof that PTA is not just a parent organization, it's a parent-teacher organization. I'd like to open up to, uh, public comments on any of the listed agenda items.
I was, I, I was wondering, uh, Dr. Luff, when you were in the gym show, had, in fact, moving pictures been invented? Were they in color, or was it black and white at that point? Maybe we can find some.
Being, I think you were a senior teacher there at the time, you would probably be more aware than I.
I'm gonna move us right along into new business. Sometimes you need to know when to move a meeting a wall. I learned that in social work school. Um, number one, Mr. Farrell, save us.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jennifer Del, oh, Del Olio, I'm sorry, my eyes are not working, as a long-term substitute guidance counselor at the middle school effective November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, through January twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education. At the substitute rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day, Ms. Del Olio holds provisional certification as a school counselor.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen appointment of Kelly Wilson as follows. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to, to appoint Kelly Wilson to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing on November eighth, two thousand seventeen, and terminating on November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated and in accordance with the PVCSD policy ninety-two fifty. Ms. Wilson holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved in recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the October twelfth, two thousand seventeen appointment of Sarah Roberts as follows. To appoint Sarah Roberts to a part-time position, twelve hours per week, as a speech-language therapist at the rate of fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents per hour effective November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, through June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Ms. Roberts holds professional certification in speech and language disabilities.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved the recommendation of superintendent of schools to create the position of office assistant one, school calendar at the middle school, and appoint Carolyn DeRubius to the position with a twenty-six-week probationary term effective December fourth, two thousand seventeen, through June fourth, two thousand eighteen, extendable to December fourth, two thousand eighteen, on step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the disposal of out-of-date high school library books as per document number eighty-two eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved to accept the district's management response and corrective action plan in response to the PKF O'Connor Davies management letter for the fiscal year ending June, two thousand seventeen, as per document number eighty-six slash eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent, uh, agenda, items two through thirteen, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We have CSEA/CPSA placements. We're approving the additional time of approximately 40 minutes a week for our special ed teacher, Craig Glenn, to work with homebound students. We're approving the overnight trip to the state cross-country championships, which you recently heard about. Even though we're approving the trip, the section one covers all the expenditures for that trip. Amend four coaching appointments for our field hockey and our football coach, who, one of them is related to me. We did not have longevity in their appointments when we appointed them. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving one additional staff for elementary school homework help night. We're approving two unpaid days for one of our staff members, so she'll be out for two days and she won't be receiving pay. We're accepting the generous donation of $75 from the Nabel family for the John Kleinergris Scholarship Fund. We're approving the middle-school chorus accompanists for the school year. Ms. Bennett will be working and wearing the choruses, she'll be playing for them. We're approving the pep band advisor. We're appointing designation imagination coordinators for the district and for the high school. We're approving additional work for the reading teacher to provide the Wilson reading services to a classified student.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to open it up now to public comments on any topic at all? Anything else from anybody in the board? All right, then, at this time, I would like, she's coming, okay. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for 75 matters of the employment histories of 75 particular persons, after which time there will be no additional informa, you know, no additional business conducted.
Second.
Or any oxygen in the room.
My God.
Questions or comments?
It's gonna be a long night.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to wish everybody a very, very happy, grateful Thanksgiving, and a healthy one to you and all your family.